Call this meeting to order. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Roldan. Could you lead us? Roll call.
Mayor Gerardo Anaya. Vice Mayor Miguel Villanpando. Councilmember Luis Galindo. Councilmember Jesús Roldán.
Present.
Councilmember Martha García.
Present.
Councilmember Juan Castillo.
Present.
Councilmember Lorena Zendejas.
Present.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, have a quorum.
Thank you, Andrea. This time I'd like to make a call to the public for any comments. None. Moving on to Oath of Officer and Swearing in Ceremony by Honorable Judge Manuel Fierro. Do the next item. Yeah, I guess we could wait. Sorry. Sorry, we'll move on to the next item and then come back to that one. We'll move on to item 6.1, Proclamation of Women's History Month.
Vice Mayor Villanpando, for your consideration, in front of you is a proclamation for Women's History Month.
Yeah, I have it. Is there a motion to approve proclamation?
So movement.
We've got a motion by Councilwoman Zendejas. Councilwoman García, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Zendejas, and she do us the honor of reading it for us.
Proclamation, Women's History Month. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation and city in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life of the nation and city by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation and city by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation and city. Whereas American women have particularly important important in establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation and city. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military. Whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. Whereas the city of Somerton has had two women serve as mayor in the past and continues to support women in leadership roles in the Somerton City Council as department directors and as staff. And whereas despite contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now, therefore, Mayor Gerardo Anaya of City of Somerton, on behalf of the citizens of Somerton, do hereby proclaim March 2022 Women's History Month in the city of Somerton and urge all citizens to celebrate our all past, present, and future contributions by women and continue our efforts to create a world that is more equitable, peaceful, and prosperous for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Zendejas. So now moving back to item 5.1. We're ready.
Vice Mayor, I don't know if you would want all the women to, who can stand up and take a picture with you?
If they like, sure.
Photo op.
Photo op for all the women in the audience and staff, obviously.
That means you too.
With all of council or without? How do you guys want?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. Neil. Okay, going back to item 5.1, Oath of Officer and Swearing in Ceremony. Mr. Judge Manuel Fierro.
I can have the officers stand up as part of the audience or the officials. No, I'll go ahead and read it out to you. When I say aye right after aye, you can say no thanks. Just for information for those who are here, it's a required tradition, and it's required. It's not just a ceremony. So this is part of the ceremony requirement. And when they get certified in the academy, they are pretty strong there, but this is for the citizens. So what I'll leave you to do is at this time raise your right hand. And we'll be reading after the word aye. Usdaw, we swear. And I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona. And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona. And that I will bear with me faith and allegiance to the same. And defend against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And then I will faithfully and impartially. Defend. Faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of Somerton Police Officer, Somerton Animal Patrol Officer, and Somerton Foreign Security Officer. Appointing to the best of my ability. So help me God. I give the square of new officers per se, somebody who aren't too new, but new to the city. I grew up with Officer Casio at Somerton Elementary School, and he started at elementary school, high school. He was a police officer here for many years in Somerton, and then he went along and was a police officer assemblies and then the prison. So I've known him for many years, and these two individuals I don't know, but I hope to get to know. So my offices are always open. If you have any questions, not related directly to a case, you stop by and ask me questions, and we'll go. So now I need you to step up here. Where we can have you sign your certificates. Congratulations, Officer Casio.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen, and welcome on board. Hope to see you around, but I hope it's not an efficient city business, so. Can Councilman Roldan?
Just, it's nice to see somebody that went through the sports here in Somerton as a young kid. And not only him, but others also that, you know, like Mr. Mena, the wife, and Donald, that went through the sports play here in several soccer games and so many, you know, to see him doing this, it's, you know, it feels good. I mean, Mr. Casio, you know, from Somerton too, so, you know, it feels good that our kids that, you know, from Somerton are also, you know, here in our police department and helping out of them, giving back to their community. So thank you guys for that.
Any other comments? None. Moving on to Consent Agenda, item 7.1, Approval of Minutes for City Council Meeting of February 15, 2020. And item 7.2, Check Register for the Month of February 2022. Is there any questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Seek a motion to approve the consent agenda stated.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Zendejas, or second by Councilwoman García. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Moving on to item 8.1, Presentation on the New Sanitation Rate Study by Willdan Financial Services.
Pardon, Vice Mayor and Council. The item before you is a presentation for the new sanitation rate study. We contracted Dan Jackson from Willdan Financial Services, and he is here with us to present the final document.
Thank you very much. Thank you, members of the council. My name is Dan Jackson. I am Vice President of Willdan Financial Services, formerly known as Economist.com. We're the company that was engaged by the city to do this sanitation rate study. Before I get started, I'd like you all to know that the year 2022 represents my 25th year of service for the city of Somerton. I was first hired by the city in 1997 to do a rate study for your water and wastewater utility, and I've done rates and impact fees for water, wastewater, and sanitation periodically over the last quarter century. I really appreciate all of the confidence you all have shown me over the years, and I appreciate the fact that you keep inviting me back, even though sometimes the news I give you isn't exactly what you want to hear. But, and speaking of which, I want to talk to you tonight a little bit about your sanitation rates. We, like I said, we were engaged to do the most recent rate study and financial analysis with regards to your sanitation facility. So I'm gonna spend hopefully just a couple of minutes going through a few slides that summarize the results of my study and our recommendations for your future rate plans. But before I get started, I do also want to let you know that your sanitation utility, like your water and wastewater utility, is intended to be operated like a business. You want the monthly fees you collect from sanitation service to cover all the costs of providing that service. Well, as we all know, costs are going up. Cost of everything goes up by at least 3% a year due to inflation. When inflation and energy costs and gasoline and costs like that go up, it affects all of our household budgets, but it also affects our utility service. And so, in order to ensure that ratepayers pay what it costs to provide that service, then those costs have to be properly passed through. Now, if you, without doing periodic rate reviews and rate plans, you run the risk of selling the service, which is what it is, at less than what it costs you to provide that service, and that's, of course, not necessarily good business. So while it's never easy to ask people to pay more, all you're asking your ratepayers to do is cover what it is costing you to provide this necessary and vital service to the citizens. So we go to page 2. I want to start just by talking about what your current rates are. You see from this chart right here, you have a two-time-per-week monthly, per-week pickup of your trash. Now, that's actually a little unusual. More and more cities across the United States are going to once-a-week pickup. You also, the fact that you do twice-a-week pickup is an added level of service that you provide to your customers. For that, you charge them $16.33 a month. Just to give you a little perspective, the national average for monthly residential sanitation fees is about $22 to $24, so you're significantly below the national average. On the commercial side, you have a limited number of commercial customers, and they pay a rate based on the cubic yard containers. Obviously, the larger the yard and the more pickups per week, the more people pay. Next slide, please. So, how does this, can you put it up? There you go. Great. How does your monthly charge compare to what others, both in this part of Arizona and across Arizona, pay for monthly service? This chart intends to make that comparison. Like I said, at $16.33, it's actually quite a bargain, significantly below the national average. It's also below just about all of your neighbors. You're a tad above Yuma and Tombstone, but as you can see, you're about equivalent to Benson and Tucson. You're less than San Luis, you're less than Douglas, you're less than Bisbee, you're way less than Phoenix, which charges more than double what you charge. Now, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I do know that a significant portion of the cities in this survey only have once-a-week pickup. So not only do you charge less than them, you also give them better quality of service. So, for that reason, I think it is reasonable to conclude that you have a very well-priced service at this time. Next slide, please. Okay, how many accounts do you have? You're predominantly a residential service. You have a total of 3,867 current accounts right now, which, of course, all but less than 100 are residential, and you just have a smattering of commercial customers at this time. Next slide. Now, when you do a long-term financial plan, you have to look not just at where your utility is today, but where is it going to be tomorrow? And so you have to factor in the fact that there is going to be growth over the next several years. Well, Somerton has had some very robust growth in recent years. And we're projecting that that growth is going to continue. You have 3,867 accounts today. We're projecting you're gonna hit about 5,000 accounts by the year 2031. That's an average of about 130, 140 new accounts per year. For the most part, that's relatively beneficial, because that's, every new customer is a new monthly charge, and that's more revenue for the city. Next slide, please. Okay, so, when we do the forecast, we do assumptions not just of growth, but also how your expenses are going to go up. So what are the primary assumptions that we use in this forecast? And remember one thing very important. A forecast is not a guarantee. A forecast is a prediction based on a series of reasonable assumptions. What are the assumptions that we put in place? Well, first of all, we assume that you keep your two pickup-per-week policy, that you continue to provide that additional level of service, and that most of your expenses are gonna increase by about 3% a year. Now, here's the deal. Inflation has actually been ticking up a little bit in recent months, as we've all seen. Certainly see it every time you go to the gas station, that's for sure. We're still assuming that inflation is gonna be relatively transitory, and that it's not gonna last. But, in any long-term financial plan, it's important to go back and periodically review it. And I would say that if inflation continues at its alarmingly high rates over the next couple of years, then I think you'll have to continually periodically review not just your sanitation rates, but all your other rates as well. We also assume that some of your expenses, like insurance and workers' comp, increase at higher rates. But, the key issue with regards to the long-term sanitation plan is how you finance your new and replacement trucks over the next decade. The city has had a more robust amount of need for replacement and new trucks in recent years. And those trucks are expensive, and how you finance the replacement of those trucks is going to be a key issue in your long-term rate plan. Next slide, please. This slide right here shows that over the next 10 years, the city is projecting that it's going to need to spend as much as $2.9 million in side loaders and front loaders, about $2.1 million in side loaders and about $800,000 in front loaders. $2.9 million is a lot of money, but this level of service is necessary to ensure that you can continue to provide service with a quality system. So, how do you fund that? Where do you get the $2.9 million? Well, as I said at the beginning of this presentation, rate plans are heavily dependent on capital improvements. And how you fund those capital improvements is gonna be the key to what your rate plan ultimately ends up being. So you've got a couple of options here. One is to buy the trucks outright. And so how you do that, what you do is you set $300,000 a year aside. Every year, you put it into a special fund that you use to buy the replacement trucks. Sometimes you have to do a little bit of fancy footwork with your finances, but you've got a very capable financial staff, so you can certainly do that. So you can either, so that's one option. You set $300,000 aside every year to buy new trucks. The other option is you lease the trucks. Now, the benefits of leasing is that it generally means it's gonna be less cost. The downside of leasing is that you don't actually own the vehicle. You lease it. And so you have to turn it back in over a certain amount of time. But, in managing a utility, these are the decisions and the offsets that you need to make. So I'll show you the impact on the rates of both of those scenarios. Next slide, please. So, we're gonna recommend that you establish a new five-year plan. Right now, your revenues are recovering a little less than their costs. And so, your revenues have fallen a little bit short of your costs in the last couple of years. So we're gonna recommend that you set a new five-year plan that will eventually get, ensure that your sanitation fund covers all of its costs. Now, as I said, your rates are primarily residential, but you also have commercial rates. And the rate plan is also going to show you what commercial rates would need to be, assuming that you can, if you continue to provide commercial service. We want to make sure that customers pay what it costs to provide that service. Commercial service is more expensive, and so therefore the rates have to reflect that. So, next slide, please. So, this is your cost of service under Scenario 1. I know there's a lot of numbers here, but let me just kind of give you the bottom line. The bottom line there says total cost of service goes from $1,285,000 in the current year, and it generally trends up to about $1.5 million by the year 2027. Right above it, you see the truck replacement fund. It assumes that you set aside $300,000 a year, every year, and that you use that to buy the new trucks. So what impact does that have on the rates? Next slide, please. Right now, your rate is, your residential rate is $16.33. It would require that you increase your rate by $1.96 effective in April of 2022. So it would go to $18.29. It would go by $1.65 in 2023 to 1994. And it would go up to $21.73 by January 2024. Basically, you're looking at rating adjustments of about $2 a month, each month, for the next four years with an increase of about $1.29 a month in the fifth year. What will this do? This will ensure that all your operating costs are covered, and it will give you the ability to fund $2.9 million in truck replacement over the next 10 years. Next slide, please. This is the commercial rates. I'm not gonna go through all these numbers, but basically the percentage increase on the commercial rates is about the same as the residential rates. Depends on the size of the cubic yard container and the number of pickups per week. That will show what the ultimate cost per month is going to be. So, if you're a commercial customer, you can have anywhere from a $67 a month fee if you have a two-cubic-yard rate that picks up twice a week, to $600 a month if you have six pickups a week from a six-yard cubic, you know, container. No big surprise there. The more trash you use, the more trash you produce, the more you pay. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is the second scenario. The second scenario assumes that instead of buying the trucks, you lease the trucks. Look at the line where it says lease payments. Remember, in the first scenario, it was $300,000 a year, every year, to buy the trucks. But under a leasing scenario, it's less than that. It's only $72,000 in the first year. It's only $198,000 in the second year. And it approaches $300,000 a year, and some years it actually kicks a little above it. It just sort of depends on the length of the lease and how many trucks you get in a certain year. But generally, most years, the lease payments are going to be less than what it would cost if you bought the trucks outright. And so, if that's the case, then that means your cost of service is less and your rate adjustments will be less. So if we go to the next slide? So what does that mean? It means that instead of $2 a month adjustments, you're probably looking at about $1.50 a month for each year for the next five years. As you can see, under Scenario 2, your monthly fee of $16.33 will only go to $17.80, only up by $1.47 instead of $2. Now, of course, it is an adjustment. There isn't any way to make the adjustment zero, but the lease factor, if you agree to the idea that you're leasing and not actually owning the trucks, will allow you to implement rates that are less than what it would be under the first scenario. So, next slide, please. And then, of course, this is the commercial rates, which also would be less under Scenario 2. So, so, next slide, please. Really, that's, that really is the extent of my prepared remarks. I'd just like to close by saying that, of course, you know, it's never easy to ask anybody to pay more for anything. it's never easy to ask anybody to pay more for anything at any time, for any reason. We certainly understand that. But there's a couple of things to keep in mind about, about this rate plan, no matter what scenario you choose. First of all, and this is key. All you're asking your ratepayers to do is pay what it is costing you to provide that service. One of the unfortunate facts of life is that costs go up. And everything costs more today than it did 10 years ago. So there's no reason why the sanitation service shouldn't fit in that bill as well. But even under the plans that have been alternative, that have been shown here, your rates will still compare very favorably to your neighbors and to the national average. Because while this plan would require adjustments to your rates, everybody else's adjustments are going to go up as well. Finally, you'll notice that in my presentation, I meticulously avoided using percentages. I don't like to use percentages because the problem is your rates are so low right now that any increase of any magnitude at all is going to sound, from a percentage standpoint, like it's a lot. Under scenario one, the first adjustment was 12%, but it was $2. So that's why I think it's more important to focus on the amount people pay as opposed to a nebulous percentage number. You know, if, uh, if Phoenix did a, a $2 rate adjustment, it would sound a lot less because their rate's a lot higher. So like we said, it's never easy to ask ratepayers to pay more. But no matter what assumption, or what scenario you adopt, if you adopt one of these two scenarios, it will ensure that you will have a health, continue to have a healthy and well-managed sanitation utility for the future. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions after this time.
Any questions?
When was the last time we as a city, you know, had this sanitation, uh, increased the sanitation fee?
Last sanitation rate, the actual date of the last rate increase? Do you, do you remember what that actual date was?
709. Yeah, 709, 09, I believe.
Yeah.
09, or 09, I believe.
Yeah, it's been something like 10 years. 10, 10 to 12 years, yeah.
09 or 2010.
And that's actually something I should have mentioned in my, in my prepared remarks because you've gone a long time without any adjustment at all.
Be, how much, let's say right now, are we in the deficit because we haven't had an increase since 2009, approximately?
It all depends on the, I, I, I don't mean to be flippant, but it all depends on the meaning of the word deficit. It depends on if you include the sanitation truck costs. You see, you're not running much of a deficit right now, but that's because you're not buying the trucks. If you add the cost of the trucks, then the deficit looks larger. So what, what many utilities do is they keep their rates low artificially because they're not spending money on capital improvements or replacements like that. So on the books, it doesn't really look like you're losing much money. But that's just simply because you haven't been doing as many truck replacements. This plan assumes that you are going to follow through and do $3 million of truck replacements over the next 10 years. If you assume that, then your, then your deficit is in the about $400,000 range.
And you know what, Councilman Castillo, I was going to ask that exact same question. How much are we, regardless of potential future purchases of trucks as of today? How much are we in the red?
Thank you, that sounds about right.
Do another comment that piggybacks with your, with your question. Why did we wait from 2007 till now? You're talking about, what?
13 years?
Since 2009?
15 years.
Well, it's like the water increases that we did with the residents. Um, you know, it was 10 years and then all of a sudden we forked the bill.
Yeah, and see, and this is, this is why, I mean, you projected it, you projected these every five years. So why not do them on eight, five-year increments, review them? But, um, quite honestly, in these five years, we're going to generate $2.9 million in trucks? How many trucks are we talking about? That we're going to purchase?
10-year period.
Okay, but your rate is for, for five years.
Yeah.
So are we going to get, within those five years, we're going to be saving $2.9 million?
If we can go back.
The way I looked at it, I looked at it from a different.
Page seven.
Yeah, page seven.
Right.
You have 2.9 up to 2030, 31, that's our cost.
Correct.
But your rate study is only for five years.
The, the rate recommendations are for five years. So in all likelihood, require additional adjustments in the years 2028 through 2031. However, when you do financial planning, it's, w- once you get beyond five years, you're really getting pretty speculative in rate adjustments. That's why when we do rate plans, we generally tell councils to limit it to five years. You will have to do rate adjustments after five years. I can assure you of that because everybody is, because costs are going to continue to go up. Right now.
I agree with you in, um, from that perspective. But during your presentation, you said that these five years will give us sufficient monies equivalent to the 2.9 to be able to purchase these trucks that were identified in the 10-year plan.
I, I guess I should have been a little more specific in what I said. It will get, it will, it will set you on the path that will allow you to do that. You will need probably, if I recall correctly, the, the, right now, the projections for the years six through 10 are probably about 3% each year because they're cost of living adjustments each year.
So this 2, 2.9 million, it's not projected in these numbers then?
Well, if you do, it is if you do scenario one. Because if you do scenario one, what happens is you have, you will have sufficient rates over the five-year period to fund $300,000 every year in truck replacement. And so in years six through 10, you will still have the ability to fund $300,000 a year in truck replacements because you've set your rate at that, at that level. What, if you don't do any future rate adjustments after 2026, you may run into issues funding your operating costs. That's why after 2026, you won't need excessive rate adjustments. You will need rate adjustments. You, you will need it every year. But under, particularly under scenario one, you will have a rate in place that will allow you to fund $2.9 million over 10 years.
Sam, what's the average cost of a side loader right now?
Now, it's about 390, 380.
Three.
Actually, the cost or the current truck that we are waiting for was 360.
360, so even, even if you go for the four, what's the life expectancy of a side loader?
About eight to 10 years.
Okay, so.
My, my plan is, is to have.
So you're talking about even if you buy two, that's, that's almost a 16 years. So I just don't get why these numbers are so inflated on the, on a 10-year if the life expectancy for a side loader is eight.
So we say years, but we are planning to, we need for sure two trucks. We need two side loaders, and we really need front loader now. No, this is for.
This is for residential.
Side loaders are for residential, front loaders are for commercial.
And quite honestly, the, the front loader, now that we're talking about commercial, it's not sustainable. What, you have 70 some odd businesses?
97% of our, our, is residential. I, I think we could do away with the commercial.
Yeah.
I don't think that our residents have, then, they need to support that.
Currently have two front loaders, old trucks. For sure, we need one front loader tomorrow. We definitely need a front loader now. Now, we have one, one side loader coming in, but is that, that's a new one. We have the old ones that we have is 2015. So we need to at least replace the body, which is the management system for the trucks in the next, in the next year, which is going to be the 220. So with that, we have, we're going to have one new truck and one used truck. That we, sooner or later, we need to, to buy another one, the third truck, in order to cover another road. And yes, I agree, the commercial route, I don't see that as feasible.
See, uh, you got 88, 88 accounts. 88 accounts is not going to absorb the, the $800,000 you're, you're trying to budget for in order to be self-sustainable. Residential will be subsidizing. So for me, if, if it's not so sustainable, I say we get rid of the commercial and let a, let another party take care of it. But as far as all these numbers for these side loaders, eight, with an eight-year lifespan, I don't see how you guys came up with, with 2.1 for, for a 10-year, 10-year span.
That's why we have the 360 coming in and the 220 for the replacement of the 2015 truck. Then we, but we're planning to buy on 2024, a new truck. So with that, we're going to have two trucks and the 220 is basically a 2015 truck.
But the one you guys have coming already is already budgeted for. And you guys have the revenue for it, don't you? Okay, so that eliminates that. Okay, so what is the breakdown on, on financing it per year for eight years? Okay, so I think if you work the numbers out that way, it'll be more feasible in order to rate increase. Because Dan is exactly right, you know, I was looking at it on a percentage basis. In that, that five-year, five-year, uh, study, there's a 66% difference between now and what it would be, end up at. With option A, it's like 58% for option B. You know, that's, it's, it's, it's a big, it's a big hit. So I, I personally would love to see some of these numbers redone because I don't see ourselves spending 2.1 million on side loaders in a 10-year cycle. I just don't see it. I don't think it's really, we don't need 2.1 million dollars of, of, of trucks unless you guys can convince me otherwise. But, um, the, the other thing that I would like to see too is, uh, when they do these presentations, is a little bit more detail on these, uh, operating costs. What does it consist of? Manpower, whatever they, they are. And also on landfill is pretty much self-explanatory, but transfers? How many of us know what's involved in transfers? We don't. See, and that type of stuff is, uh, that, that we need to know. At least I, I would like, for myself, also capital outlays, same thing. Which ones are they? I know what capital outlays are, but I need a, uh, I need an identification, also debt service. You know, because if we do, they bring this back every five years, my question is always going to be, if we are running in the deficit, why, what happened? You know, I think that's important for us to understand what might have gone wrong within those five years if what we're charging is still not insufficient and we're operating in the red.
Okay.
So, does anybody else have anything?
No, I mean, just, um, just curious to know, you know, if inflation does go up every year, just curious to know 13 years without an increase. I mean, I think it, it's, uh, it's a little bit hard to, to imagine that, that we're operating like that. So I mean, I think that's something that we need to start kind of looking at and, and make sure that, you know, that, that it is self-sustaining so that we're not pulling from other buckets to cover this cost when it, you know, when it should be self-sustaining, you know? And, and, and if we're pulling from, you know, our general fund for reserves, you know, I, you know, I, I think that's the wrong mindset to kind of have, you know?
Yeah, that's a good point. Think about it, 13 years of inflation at 3% is 39%. When you compound it, that really probably takes it over 50%. So I mean, costs in general have gone up 50-plus percent over the last 13 years. And your rates are the same that they were 13 years ago. So that's one of the reasons why you see the rate plan as it's presented because you're now sort of in a position where you're playing a little catch-up. And the trucks are certainly a key component of it, but operating expenses are another component of it as well.
Any other questions, comments?
For sure, but I think after, uh, you know, hearing what Vice Mayor Vialfando said about the trucks and inflation and all that, I think once we put all the numbers together, then we can make, well, at least a decision and thinks that, you know, what the race is going to look like. You know, I think our, our 13 years without it, I think is, same with water. A resident's got to hit and, 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 you know, even though it's, you know, we don't like it, but at the same time, we cannot just be operating in, 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 like Councilor Vialpand, or Castillo said, and they're pulling from other reserves or so. You know, I think we need to be in the same, you know, whatever money's being, you know, spent or, or, you know, then we need to recuperate the money so we can, you know, we're not making money, but at the same time, we're not losing money too, so.
So this item was just for presentation.
Correct, correct, correct.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate you.
Thank you, everybody. Hopefully for another 25 years.
Vice Mayor, um, if I may.
Yes.
You know, looking at the commercial rate, if we eliminate that, that might help the overall cost in terms even with the residence. So it's, it's, it's a huge savings of that portion of it. When we were looking at this, actually, I was, when speaking with Sam, it remind me, and I guess it's been 13 years ago when the city came, when I was at the previous employer regarding this issue. That's when we started the, at that point, started the commercial. And it was a savings, and actually, it was more, it was more costly to go with the city at that point than to go with a private. And now things have turned over drastically. So it's, it's something to look at to make sure that we, we make those changes with the commercial and the residential, and hopefully those operating costs obviously will, will decrease.
Many cities have done that, many, I'm, I'm seeing that around a lot of cities that they're dumping their commercial.
Move, um, the cost of that truck that was approved for the future presentation so it could. Yeah, 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 but it's included in this presentation as far as. And it's.
For the future, for future.
Councilwoman Sendejas, you had.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate what Jerry was saying. You know, when, when you're taking into consideration on future increases or considerations, I think we also need to take a look at, you know, as Vice Mayor said, 97, or Councilwoman Garcia said, 97% are residential. So that means that the cost of the increase is going to be imposed in the residence or commercial. And, and I know that residents are not allowed to go dump their trash in commercial. So that means that I, as a resident, am paying additional cost for commercial when it doesn't even benefit me as a resident. So, um, I just think that next, next time we, and I understand we, we do need to increase. That's a given, but I think it has to also benefit the community.
And one thing that, um, you know, we have a great relationship with our, our neighboring municipalities. And at times, uh, when needed, they have loaned us their vehicles for residential. Sometimes you'll see the city of San Luis, uh, side loaders here to pick up residential. And people are getting, you know, trying to figure out what, what's going on, if we're changing to the city of San Luis or not. But it's because during these times, uh, you, our vehicles aren't working because they're obviously, um, how old is their oldest truck?
Oh, the oldest is 05.
05.
But that's the commercial truck. The commercial truck.
No, that's residential.
Residential.
Yes. Just something to consider that. And that's why we're like, okay, well, and that's in the future, obviously, in the, in this agenda, uh, the rental. Because obviously with the pandemic, it's a year out, but that's a different conversation here now. But these are the issues that, uh, we're seeing. And sometimes the residents don't see it. And it's good for them to be aware of what's actually going on with Public Works and not only the sanitation services, but wastewater and, and these kind of things.
Question on, on that side loader that we're waiting on? That wasn't included in this presentation?
It is.
Very first one. The 400,000 or 360, I think.
Should it have been though?
Yes, because we, if not, we don't, we wouldn't have one.
No, I know that, but I, I, it was funded already.
Yes, it was budgeted, yes. But it's a, it's a lease, lease purchase. But it would, in the future, but it would be, I know, I see what you're saying as far as our removal. Yeah. Correct. And again, we'll make those changes, uh, as we change for the commercial. If, uh, we're, if we're not going to look at it, how much that's going to change overall cost? Because it's, it's going to have an impact, yes.
I will definitely provide the high-end purchases, but if the.
Meaning by if, if any of our commercial business wants to move for a different rate, they can go with CND, Allied Waste, and we can basically lose money. So those are not secured, better suits are residential, that it is, all the residential accounts needs to be with us as a service, but not a commercial. They can basically change to any of those private companies and we just basically lose the business.
You're losing almost 2%, 3%, right?
Well.
88 accounts.
Depends, depends on the number of the accounts that we have. For example, we have 60 businesses now, and if they decide to go with Allied Waste or CND, we're basically losing one, two, three, and four so far. And we're going basically to maybe 10, 20, 40 account on commercial. That means it's going to be less revenue. Let's say that we decide to continue with the route and we purchased a 400,000 truck. Now we're in the red because we're losing business, I mean, talking about the commercial accounts.
And some of the commercial accounts already using Allied or Republic or CND?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number 8.2, Presentation on Current State of the 2021 and 2022 City of Somerton Budget and Financial Update, Ms. Gallos.
I need access because I have my presentation on here. Oh, it's not this one? No, I've made a couple of changes. Yes. Good evening, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Sarina Gallos, Finance Director. I'm here to give you a brief update of the current financial picture of the city as of the end of, as of December 2021. As you know, usually I go through our cash flows, our revenue and our, the budget that we're going to start planning for, we've already started planning for. In fact, right now, that's what we're doing, we're in the middle of all our budget meetings. So, so right now is a very, a critical period for us. These are, this is our cash allocations by fund over the last, I don't know, six, seven years. As you can see, our cash flow has, has gone up and down just because of some debt issuance that we, that we had in 2017. But overall, we're looking much better in, in 2021 and into 2022. I, I always like to include this slide so that you get a, really a visual representation of where our, our general fund revenues come from. I know a lot of, I always say that the 48% of our state shared, 48% of our revenues comes from state shared revenues, which is why it's so important that we, that we get those census numbers corrected in, for, for the 2020 census. Our city property tax does not represent a huge portion of our, of our revenues. So our city sales tax does, it represents 24%. So between our state shared revenues and our city sales tax, we're looking at the majority of our general fund revenues. Here is a property tax allocation pie chart where you see the portion that goes to the city. And as you can see, it's only 14% that comes to the city for, for your property tax allocations. And with regards to our sales tax, we receive 33% of the sales tax that our residents pay. So in the current year, we are looking to be essentially the same as last year for our city sales tax. We don't anticipate a significant increase in the current year. You've seen these numbers in past, but I wanted to ensure that you saw them again. Essentially, the first line of, of the state shared revenue, you can see the, at the population of 16,554, what our portion of the state shared revenue would be and what the final allocation was based on the new, the new population numbers. So it would be, so it is going to be a significant, a significant difference from what we would have received to what we are receiving in this fiscal year. Okay, so this is a snapshot of what our general fund looks, looks like as of December 31st, 2021. And so for our revenues, our, our local, our tax revenues, our local tax revenues, which consists of our property tax and our city sales tax are up by 0.09% based on our, on what we had budgeted. So with regards to our local revenues, we're, we're looking, we're looking good as, as I mentioned before, our internal, intergovernmental revenues are going to be slightly off, they're going to be slightly lower because of those census numbers. Overall, the general fund revenues is at about 95, 0.95, yeah, 95% of what we anticipated. So, and it also could be a timing difference because some of the, some revenues come in earlier and others come in later. So for some of our contracts that, for example, the lease, the leases that we have with the towers, with the cell, the cellphone towers, those sometimes come in at the beginning of the fiscal, at the beginning of the calendar year as opposed to the beginning of the fiscal year. So you have some timing, some revenues that, that have some timing constraints. With regards to our person, with regards to our expenditure, our personnel is the majority of our general fund. As of now, we're at 93% of the expenditure through half the year. So, and as well as our operating. So a lot of, some of these, some of these expenditures haven't gone through, such as our, all our capital outlay or our CITs. With regards to our debt, those are pretty consistent. And with regards to transfers, transfers usually occur at the end of the year. Because, for example, the, one of these transfers is the senior center, the transfer that goes to the, our senior center fund. So the way that that operates is we receive a grant from WACOG. And depending on the monies that come in from the grant, the general fund makes up for, for the remaining amount. And sometimes it's more and sometimes it's less. So last year, we received additional COVID support from them, and this year, we're, we're scheduled to receive the same. So overall, our expenditures are rather consistent. We're not, we're not overly expending right now, which is, which is good. That way, we're prepared for the next year so that our fund balance is a little higher. But overall, I don't see any, really any, anything that rings that, that, that's in the red or any expenditures that are significant that we hadn't anticipated. This is a breakout of each department with regards to to how much they've spent, what we've spent in personnel and capital outlay. We're pretty much on track with regards to our personnel and our, and our operating costs. Like I said, there's nothing that really, there is really no department that's in the red, whereas we've, we've expended too much or, or we've had any unforeseen expenditures. I think the only unforeseen expenditure we had was the fire, the truck, the engine, the ladder truck, the engine that we had. However, that amount was approved by you and it came out of contingency. So you'll see that in the next presentation because you'll see that adjustment from, for the fire budget. And that was approved with the approval of the item. Let's see, overall, right now, we're at a deficit of 190,000. Like I said, that will, that may change once we do all the transfers from fund to fund at the end of the year. Okay, these are the funds that we've received from the, the federal funds for COVID funds. Within this fund is where, where all the, all the projects that are associated with what can be utilized for the grant lie, such as our fiber optic infrastructure, the rewiring of our, of our network and the telephone system. So the majority of these funds are already encumbered in the next three years. With regards to our HERF revenue, our HERF revenue is looking rather well. We anticipated a significant hit, however, because gas is up, we're, actually with gas being up, the tax goes up as well. So that's actually turning out to be good for the HERF fund, not necessarily for, for the economy as a whole or for us within our, in our pockets. But that's part of the reason why our, our tax revenues are, are a bit higher, even though we expected them to be, to be lower. Some of the, the projects included in this, in this fund are the Somerton Heights Reconstruction and Water Main Project and as well as the, the State Avenue Reconstruction Drainage. I believe most of those drainage are a partnership with the Flood Control District, correct? Okay, let's see. With regards to our water revenues, our water revenues are rather consistent. If you, if you look at our shut-off fees, usually our shut-off fees are much higher. However, with the, with the uncertainty of COVID, we, we decided to go through and be more conservative within our budget. But since we started, we started actually charging those, you'll see an increase in the water revenue as a result. Let's see, and our rates are actually for, right now, we're still at a bit of a deficit with regards to the, the overall health of the water fund. But I anticipate that as of next year, we will be breaking even. And a lot of the projects that are within the, our water fund, such as the water tank rehabilitation product and the, the Water Main, Water Main extensions, those are being financed. So we received a WIFIL loan for those projects. And that's where you see our loan proceeds at the bottom, you see the loan proceeds, that's, the loan proceeds coming in. And you see with regards to the CIP expenditures, that's where those expenditures lie. So it's a bit of a wash and, and you see our debt service payments, that's where, that's really where the cash flow comes out. And I know that you mentioned those transfers in, in past, and so I wanted to make sure that I highlighted that. Our wastewater, with regards to our wastewater fund, we're actually exactly where we need to be based on our revenue projections and, and, and our operating costs. So with regards to our, our revenue projections, we're exactly where we need to be in order to again break even in 2023. So with, when we're putting together the budget for 2023, you'll see the change in, in, in that revenue and the, the change in the, the bottom line. And again, the, the high school sewer infrastructure is also being financed. So that's why you don't see a huge deficit within this fund, because the majority of those projects are being financed. And here is the sanitation fund that we were just, that we were just talking about. With regards to where we are in our, in our revenues, the overall, the overall fund you'll see is at a deficit of 129,000. And that includes the additional, the additional revenue we're going to receive for the loan because we are actually financing that new vehicle. So in order to mitigate that deficiency, we need to increase rates. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Is there any questions, comments? None. Thank you, Serena.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, item number nine. 9.1, A Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Rental Agreement with Rush Truck Leasing, Inc.
Counsel, the purchase of the new sanitation side loader truck was approved on October 6, 2020. Due to the pandemic, the delivery date of the truck and the body has been delayed several times due to the problems of manufacturing several parts of the body and the chassis. So we have one sanitation backup truck that is a really old truck and constantly is in the job for repairs. In the past, City of Yuma and City of San Luis have assisted us with a residential route, but they cannot continue assisting us with this, with this problem. In order to continue with the daily residential truck pickup service, we need to rent a side ladder truck and for, for continue with our residential route. And according to Magnilius, which is the, the body manufacturer, they will probably finish with a truck in the next, the end of this month or beginning of April. So Vice Mayor and Counsel, do you have any questions for me before my recommendation?
Any questions? Sam, I have one. This contract was made out for September 29th, 2020, we.
Yeah, that's, that's when we, when Counsel approved the purchase of the truck, the residential truck. So in the meantime, we tried to finance that truck using UZI funds. Because UZI funds, the UZI loan is going to give us a low percentage and a 15% grant back in, back in that time.
So this is the lease purchase?
No, this is, this is, this is the rental.
So wouldn't we?
Rental agreement.
Wouldn't we have another contract on top of that or why is it?
No, this is a contract for, with Rush to rent the truck.
Yeah, for 7,600, yeah, for 7,600 a month.
Correct, a month, yes.
Yeah, so I just, I guess I'm not understanding why it's dated for September 29th, 2021. Shouldn't these be a separate lease?
No, because we ran the truck, well, we came in with an agreement in the past, but because we, because we exceed or we are going to exceed a 30,000. That's why we came here to ask for approval in order to.
To continue. To continue with the rental.
To continue with the lease until we receive a truck because it's going to be more than 30,000.
Vice Mayor, what happened was that we, we, obviously we needed the rental because we weren't going to be able to have the other vehicle. And since we knew maybe two months, but it seems like two months turned into five months, six months. And since we were not going to get to the threshold of $30,000, we said, well, in three months, we'll be done and get over and done with. But obviously, we're getting to that point of the threshold and we wanted to make sure that we bring it to Counsel for your approval because it's going to go over the 30,000 overall.
Exactly.
Yes.
That is correct.
Oh, so it's an extension.
Exactly. Extension, yes.
Because we suppose you're going to be a two or three months only.
Problem solved.
Okay.
Just, so when are you going to give them, because we have to give them a 30-day notice. So just be sure to keep that in mind because we'll be on the hook for another month, even if we receive the other.
Well, hopefully we receive the other vehicle here in a couple of weeks. Once we receive it, then we'll give them 30 days because if not, then. Once we receive it, then we'll give them thirty days, because if not, then
Correct.
All right.
They know because they say company, correct.
Yeah, but if I'm the company, I'd still let you keep it as long as you want and collect seven thousand six hundred a month. So Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve by Councilman Roldan. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Sendejas. All those in favor? Aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Due discussion and possible action to award the lowest responsible bidder and enter into a contract with K Construction in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-five cents for a one million gallon water, water storage repair project. Mr. Palacios?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Counsel. Invitation to bid for the construction of the above mentioned project was advertised in the Yuma Daily Sun. The design work and specification were prepared by James David and Associates. The project involves the replacement of the existing tank roof and rafters, the top three feet of the tank shell, and new inside coating and exterior paint. This is according to our inspection. Currently, on Thursday, March, March third, twenty twenty-two, we opened four sealed bids. We review it and analyze the bids, some middles, and the results are attached in the bid opening sheet. The lowest bidder was K Constructors with a base bid of nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. The budget for this project is six hundred and ninety thousand, which is available for, we're going to finance with the WIFA loan. The, basically, unfortunately, the big difference is the current high prices on the steel. This is the big difference of, of the, of the bid that we receive. Our plan is to continue with a WIFA loan of six hundred and ninety thousand and use contingency, contingency funds to complete this project with an amount of two hundred and seventy thousand. Vice Mayor and Counsel, do you have questions?
Any questions, comments? And the current rates will sustain this debt, correct?
Correct.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Roldan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Castillo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I oppose. Motion carries. And item nine point three, discussion and possible action to award the lowest responsible bidder and enter into contract with DPE Construction in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars for the Union Street Reconstruction Projects. Mr. Palacios?
Again, good evening, Vice Mayor and Counsel. This is one of my CIP projects as well and on the HERF budget. This project is basically the reconstruction of Union Street between Main Street and Cano. The design work and specification were prepared by Dal Robis and Associates. And the project involves the construction of new concrete sidewalk, sidewalk ramps, vertical curb and gutter, and the replacement of the old damaged asphalt between Main and County Street. On Thursday, March, March third, twenty twenty-two, we opened two sealed bids for this project. The, the results are attaching the bid evaluation record. The lowest bidder was DPE Construction with a base bid amount of a hundred, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. Our estimate and current budget for this project is one hundred and sixty-five thousand. And basically, it's on budget, just ten thousand higher than our budget. And our recommendation for counsel is to award the bid to DPE Construction in the bid amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Questions, comments? No. Is there a motion?
Some.
I'll second. We have a motion by Councilwoman Sendeja, second by Councilman Roldan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, Sam. You had a busy night tonight. Item number nine point four, presentation discussion to enter into memorandum of understanding with Campesinos Sin Fronteras for community educational workshops. Jesus.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members, Mesa Parks and Rec Director. Just to review an item with you that was brought to our attention a couple of months ago by Campesinos Sin Frontera. This is an excellent opportunity for the community to establish a, a partnership with our neighboring agency. We have good relationships with their staff, working alongside Emma and the rest of our team for many years. They're going to bring some workshops to the city, free of no cost. We would coordinate with Campesinos to schedule the, the workshops appropriately, of course, under staff hours. So there's that coordination to avoid further expenses for staff time. Also, we would review the items before we approve the workshops, depending on our policies. The workshops that they would manage is for both youth and adults in trending topics like bullying, sex ed, and other relevant like anti-drug, drug workshops. That's the main anchor. And it's only for educational purposes, and it would involve families as a whole. And it, it is a great activity that, activities that would be hosted in the youth center and the community center. And the request is basically to use the facilities. At this moment, I may answer any questions. The MOU was reviewed by our, our city attorney, Jorge Lozano. Might need some touch-ups, nothing major. The agreement would be for one year, test it out and see how it goes. And after that, we can review at a later time. Any further questions at the moment?
Any questions, comments?
What are the touch-ups that, that need to be corrected in the MOU?
If I may.
On my, at least on my end, I still have to review, you know, the, the liability and coverage for, for anything. Should, should counsel decide to give direction to, to enter into such an MOU?
Then, and you know what, I do want to make a comment, because we had the similar situation with, with a church that was providing food for our community. We've always, we've instructed staff then, and I think it's appropriate to instruct staff. And basically, they leave it up to the city manager, as long as it's not costing us man-hours and they're done, like Mr. Mesa said, during the normal hours of operation, then I don't, I don't see a problem, as long as the schedule fits the, the, the accommodates Parks and Rec, you know, and it's, I don't think there's, there's really anything for a MOU from our perspective now. If, if counsel decides to require, require insurance, then so be it, you know. But I think it's something that, that can be addressed by our city manager, not necessarily keep bringing these up to, to city council. I mean, you already know, I, from previous experience, kind of what the limits that counsel has already established, so. I don't know if anybody else wants to share anything. Councilwoman Garcia?
We had a similar, and I don't know if it was in, an MOU was ever established when, I think Campesinos used to do the cancer. And I don't think that MOU was ever, it was just an, an understanding and speaking with the city manager. Because it was a, again, a five oh one C three, it was allowable and.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you, Vice Mayor, council members. As you have been talking about how things changes throughout the years, the funding sources that we get grants from state or, you know, foundations, they've been lately asking for MOUs to demonstrate that there is really a commitment between the agencies that are working together. It's really a handshake in paper, as has been mentioned. We've been working together for many, many years, you know. Campesinos has been established here in Summerton since the beginning. And we have always tried to bring as many resources as we can for our community. We're always at the front, you know, forward, looking for, you know, what are the needs of our children, our youth, our parents? And that's what we try to do. It's nothing, we, we're not going to try to bring anything that will hurt or damage anything. Our relationship is great, like Mr. Mesa was saying. We, however, we are asked from our funding sources, like in this case, the Governor's Office for Youth, Faith and Family, Arizona Department of Health Services, that we demonstrate that we really have this agreement or commitment between the organizations, nothing else. We also have and understand that, you know, our employees are under our liability as well. And, and if there is any need for establishing or putting the, the city, you know, not the city necessarily, the, the sites where the classes will be conducted in our insurance, we can do that as well. So that, that wouldn't be a problem. Any other questions?
Any other questions? No. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we set this item in as a presentation only, but if you want to give us direction, then we can move forward with that.
Does anybody have any direction that they want to give?
Since Emma mentioned that the funding source does need an MOU, then my recommendation would be to provide the MOU as she's requesting. So if, you know, you could review it and add any adjustments or anything that you feel that needs to be on there. That would be my recommendation, is to provide that in order for her to receive those funds to provide all of these services to our community.
So we would, so they would have to bring back the MOU to approve it, correct?
Yes, we can bring it back as a consent item. Vice Mayor, and if anybody has any questions, then we can address those.
Okay.
Just to comment, the, the main revision might be the, the term. As I, as is, it mentions this year twenty-one, twenty-two, so that would be the main revision needed. Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mesa.
Thank you.
Okay, summary of current events.
Mayor, counsel, as of today, we're, we're at level one of concern. It has continued for the last couple of tests, so that's great news. Obviously, the great news is that many people have been vaccinated, continue to be vaccinated and protect themselves as they see fit as a new norm is. This, you can see many folks are still using face coverings, which is great for those, for those folks that actually do need it, or residents, rather. Also, we'd like to remind our community that we're going to have our neighborhood meeting starting next week, April twenty-sixth, I mean, March twenty-second, and which will be at the golf course at six P M. And then on March twenty-fourth, which will be at TDS Field at six P M. And we will continue in April, April twelfth and fourteen as well. Those will be at Council Park and in De Muñoz as well. Chief Danda, you're in the corner there.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, I guess the only big news we have for our department is that we saw another surge at the border, and it was over, we totaled it up. It's about a thousand, fifteen hundred people that accumulated, groups of a hundred and fifty, groups of two hundred. Over the weekend, we responded nine different times. We only had one transport. They're learning that we're not going to transport them unless they really have an injury. We're learning to communicate with that with them. And we had a meeting at two o'clock via Zoom with the, the chief border patrol agent to discuss some of the issues we've been having with them, as far as them giving us the numbers we need to recruit the money for the transports. And that's all we have. Thank you.
Chief Juarez?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, council members. So we have, we're still continuing to have our National Guard at the station. We have a replacement of one of the sergeants is going to be overseeing the rest of the staff there, Sergeant Mazenberg. He'll be helping us out there. Our officers have been receiving and continue to receive mental health wellness that we're sending out to the rest of the staff. And our body cameras are going to be switched over to upgrade the ones that we have, based on the initial contact that we have, so at no cost to the city. And the last thing I have is that we still have four positions to fill in, and we're working as, as hard as we can with human resources to be able to fit the candidates that are applying into the available academy classes that we find. Thank you.
Ms. Gallegos, finance?
Evening. Well, we're really working on the budget right now, meeting with department heads, updating all our, all our payroll numbers, so that we can present a preliminary budget here in the near future, as well as working on our capital improvements. Right now, we're meeting with all the department heads to review not just their operations, but their capital improvement. So that's really what has the majority of my time occupied for the last, for, for the last week and for the next couple of weeks.
Community development, Ms. Juarez.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Counsel. We have an open request for qualification that started on March fourth and is going to run through April fourth for a consulting firm to assist us with the zoning and subdivision code update. We have not received any some middles yet, but we are hopeful that we are going to get some responses from the consulting firms out there. Also, the community development department and park staff have met to review the current regulations for retention basins and amenities and see the possibility of making some amendments to these regulations, specifically on the landscaping and amenity requirements for future subdivisions. This is in an effort to lower the maintenance and water users' usage needs of the retention basins throughout the city. Other than that, we continue working with finance on the budget for this year. Thank you.
HR, Armando?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. The items that are of interest to the community, at the moment, we're currently recruiting for maintenance worker, one part-time administrative specialist, part-time as well, emergency dispatcher, firefighter EMT, full-time and part-time, firefighter, paramedic, full-time and part-time, and of course, police officers. Thanks.
Economic development?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, counsel. We have received a complete RFP that was submitted, expressing high interest for the purchase of old City Hall building. We are preparing to attend the Innovating Commerce Serving Communities Conference in May. This organization and conference promotes and elevates the marketplaces and spaces where people shop, dine and work. In April, we're going to be having two ribbon cuttings. One will be a barber shop and the other will be a sushi and wings establishment. They will both be located at Synergy Plaza, located at one fifteen North Columbia Avenue.
Mr. Palacios?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Counsel. An update on our Valley Vista Water Main Extension Project. Contractor continues with the pipe installation west of Avenue G. Boring Under Avenue G has been completed. Our pavement preservation program started this week. Contractor started the H A five seal application yesterday and will be here all week. And the plan is to complete the seal on Friday. And our contractor, Yuma Valley, has started the new twelve inch water main extension, which this is the high school water mainline extension project along Parkview Avenue. Thank you.
Mr. Mesa, Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. Just want to mention that we're scheduled to review the independent league baseball item tomorrow with the Summerton Parks and Rec Commission. That's a trending item for us. Just to get more information and so we can follow up with the city council at a later time. Also, staff is, is scheduled to tap into city water line by the end of this week at the community center. That's important, because by three eighteen, March eighteen, APS is going to shut down the well site. And we're going to need irrigation for the J C C ball field. Also, this is the last week of registrations for the dayglow tournament. It's going well. We have twelve teams registered. We have five spots open. Like to welcome the invitation for the public. Anybody wishing to support Deser Valley Senior Center and likes playing golf? And just to support, it's a good opportunity. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, that concludes.
Vice Mayor, that concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Covera. Mr. Roldan, do you have anything?
Mr. Mesa, I know last time I asked a question regarding Tojo Muñoz and it's looking a lot, a lot better. So please thank your, your staff for that. It looks, it looks nice. You know, I saw all the lines and everything. I guess it was going to be a game today and looks, looks really good. And about the Independent League, Yuma already said that they're not going to be doing Cal Ripken. So I think that's, that's going to open a door for many of the teams from San Luis and Somerton and Yuma that can, that can benefit from the league. And also, you know, through Facebook and, and other venues, we saw many of our, our youth from Somerton that, that did good in sports. You know, for example, Mr. Pepe Moreno daughter who plays nationally. That was, just watching that video, him boys break, feels good, you know. So, so another, I think Mr. Gander, Andres Gander also in that. So, so it's nice to see kids from our town, you know, do good also. So, so just that, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Roldan. Councilwoman Zandega.
I met with the community development department this morning regarding the neighborhood meeting discussion items, and they have really good items to present for the neighborhood meeting. So thank you, Carmen, for your time this morning. That's all I have.
Councilman Castillo.
I have nothing, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia.
Our last week's vaccine clinic, we had pretty low numbers. But I guess the positive part of it is that we continue having first-time dosers. So people are still coming out to get their vaccines. Talking with the county health department, since they're not going to the schools, the school site any longer, we're trying to work something out where we could still invite the school district to participate because it's from 3:00 to 6:00. So we're working on a plan and trying to incorporate maybe other vaccines as well. And that's it.
And I don't have anything. So is there a motion to move into executive session? Second. Motion by Councilwoman Zandega, second by Councilman Castillo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose. Motion carries. A five-minute recess?
Vice Mayor, can you also adjourn the meeting? Usually, we do an adjournment into executive session. That way, we know the meeting, the public being...
Is there a motion to adjourn regular meeting?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Zandega, second by Councilman Castillo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose. Motion carries. Five-minute break.